Being 7:04, I will call the meeting of the Select Board of Tuesday, April 15, 2025, to order. Note, this meeting is being televised, streamed, or recorded by Bourne TV. If anyone in the audience is recording or videotaping, they need to acknowledge it at this time. I don't see anyone.
I don't see Jamie.
I don't see Jamie on Zoom either. So, use of flash photography during the Select Board meetings is prohibited. If anyone from the public wishes to access the meeting, they can do so by calling the following conference line, 1-929-205-6099. The Zoom meeting ID is 897-1229-3538, and the password is all uppercase, B-O-U-R-N-E. The Zoom chat will not be monitored. Participants who wish to speak must raise the hand icon until the chair asks them to unmute. All items within the meeting agenda are subject to deliberation and votes. We will begin with a moment of silence to recognize our troops and public safety personnel. And salute to the flag. To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, a report out from executive session. There, we had a discussion with our town council, and there is nothing yet to report. We approve some minutes and release them. Community shout-out and recognition. I'm going to do two things. One is an announcement that the South Side Fire Station is going to have a community information meeting on May 1st at 7:00 PM at the Bourne Middle School Library. Get it early on the agenda. And two, Canal Cleanup Day, sponsored by AmeriCorps. And others is this Saturday, April 19th, 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM, starting at the Herring Run Recreation Area. Anybody else?
No, it's just to let the public know that we went to the Bridges Meet Form held by Senator Fernandez earlier. We had to excuse ourselves if he saw us leave because we're here, so we couldn't be two places at once. So, the people at home who are there and watching this later, we just wanted to know why we left. They're literally to come back and do the business that we're elected to do.
Go ahead, Anne Marie.
April is the month of the military child, so shout-out to all our service members' children, who make a lot of sacrifices because of, you know, their parents giving service for us. And Friday is the Bourne Intermediate School has lighted up purple, so they'll be honoring military children at the Bourne Intermediate School. They have a nice ceremony. I attended last year, and it's very nice ceremony.
Thank you. Next item is public comments and non-agenda items. I think there are people signed up for public comments, so public comments are allowed for up to a total of 12 minutes at the beginning of each meeting. Each speaker is limited to three minutes for comment. Board members are unable to respond due to posting requirements of the open meeting law. So, if you would start and introduce yourself, and you've got three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Mike Metcalf. I live in Saguamow Beach. I've lived in the town of Bourne for a little over 30 years now. In 2017, there was a parcel of property in Saguamow Beach that was sold to a developer, Robert Gendron. At that point in time, he was a member of the Bourne Planning Board. It began a lengthy process at that point for him to develop that property into a business and presidential project with an assisted living facility, a medical building, and 15 townhouse apartments on what was termed a senior care overlay district, SCOD. The project was slowed significantly due to COVID and has recently been brought forth again, this time with no assisted living facility, and the townhouse apartments have been increased to 32. What I'm here for tonight is to call the board's attention to the developer and his past relationship with Stewart Healthcare. In 2018, Mr. Gendron was appointed the position of Senior VP, Real Estate and Facilities at Stewart Healthcare, a position he held for over four years. During this time, he moved to Texas with the rest of Stewart's senior management team. Mr. Gendron's construction company, formerly of Bourne, GenCom, was renamed KREF, and between 2021 and 2024, Ralph De La Torre, the famous or infamous CEO of Stewart Healthcare, owned 40% of KREF, with Mr. Gendron owning the other 60%. Stewart's current bankruptcy records show that between May of 2023 and May of 2024, just that period alone, Mr. De La Torre paid over $37 million in consulting fees from Stewart Healthcare to KREF. KREF was also involved with the Stewart Healthcare International Division in their business dealings in Malta. That resulted in charges of three of its executives being indicted in Malta and an FBI criminal investigation formally opened into the management. In another instance, according to the bankruptcy filing, about $30 million per year was paid by Stewart Healthcare to Management Health Services, MHS, for executive oversight and overall strategic directive. MHS, also part-owned by Ralph De La Torre, employed at one point in time 16 people, which included De La Torre and several other Stewart executives, including Mr. Gendron, as well as the pilots for Stewart's three private jets owned through MHS.
I need you to finish up because you're three minutes.
Okay, I'm almost done.
Yep.
At some point in 2022, a vehicle called Sagamow Capital Management that was controlled by Robert Gendron also acquired a dissolved corporate jet for De La Torre to use for business purposes. The company doing the presentations currently for the planning board in this proposed project is Green Seal Environmental, which, according to KREF's website, was purchased by KREF in 2021. What I'm getting at here and what this shows is the extent that Mr. Gendron and Mr. De La Torre had a relationship and have a relationship. I have more documentation if it's required and anybody would like to see it. My concern here is for the town in allowing the building of a medical facility in the town of Bourne, knowing this relationship. Eight hospitals in Massachusetts alone have suffered, two closed completely, five were purchased by other groups, one was taken by eminent domain. The Boston Globe reported that at least 15 deaths were attributed to supply and staffing shortages at these hospitals. If the Massachusetts governor, the attorney general, as well as Senators Markey and Warren don't want Stewart Health or its affiliates doing business in Massachusetts again, why would we? I'm asking the Select Board and the town as a whole to do some due diligence here and ensure that we don't let corporate greed do irreparable harm to our town. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Metcalf. Next, please.
My name is Greg Berman. I live at 50 Tom Ave in the Finney's Harbor watershed. I'm here tonight to urge the Select Board to take action on behalf of the residents of Finney's Harbor and McGant's Squatig Watersheds by filing a notice of intent for a watershed permit. Until now, I've assumed this was moving forward, but now we're just three months away from the state's deadline, and there's been no vote from the board. We can't wait any longer. If Bourne does not submit an NOI by July 2025, residents in these watersheds will be forced to upgrade their septic systems within five years. This is a massive burden that will cost each homeowner tens of thousands of dollars. Environmental Partners, the town's consultant, has estimated that the cost of an AI septic system, best available nitrogen-producing technology, at about $50,000 per property. While there are financial assistance programs, the septic tax credit gives up to 60%, but that's capped at $18,000, reimbursed at $4,000 per year, and the Aqua Fund loans currently can get a 4% over 20 years for these systems. But with that interest and that cost, that still leaves about a $37,000 out-of-pocket burden for each homeowner. With about 1,250 impacted properties, this could be over $46 million in cost to Bourne residents. Every other affected town on Cape Cod has already submitted an NOI. All the groundwork for our NOI has likely already been done through the CWMP process, and filling the form probably would take about an hour to fill out online. Let me be clear. I deeply care about improving our water quality. I've spent my career in the environmental field. We've raised our kids swimming, boating, and shellfishing in Finney's Harbor. I want action, but I want smart, science-based action, not a rush, one-size-fits-all mandate from the state. The NOI gives us time, five more years, to fully explore and implement the best solutions for Bourne, solutions that go beyond sewer-ing in AI systems, like shellfish propagation, fertilized regulations, groundwater diversion, all of which are strategies being used and credited in other towns. Yes, we've already missed the deadline for new construction, but we don't have to miss this one for existing homes. We need to act now to protect our residents from unnecessary financial hardship and give Bourne the flexibility to pursue environmentally sound, cost-effective solutions. Thank you all for your time, and I hope you'll put this on a future agenda so the Select Board can discuss and vote on this important topic.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is discussion and possible vote on flagpole donation. Is there someone here to speak about the flagpole donation? Would you please introduce yourself?
Hi, my name is Mark Hutker, and I live at 36 Squatig Harbor Road. My colleague Roy Heffernan is recent past president of the Katomic Club, and Chris Clint here is a builder and a neighbor as well. And a long story very short, our wooden flagpole at the club, when we were redoing the deck, fell and broke. And the person at the time who was in charge of that project replaced the pole and put a new one in, and the old one was repaired subsequently by Chris and a colleague of his. We would simply like to, in honor of Massachusetts 250, re-erect our historic flagpole that's been repaired on the corner of Squatig Harbor Road and Mystery Lane. There is an intersection there where the women in our community have a planting bed. There is a street sign there denoting Squatig Harbor Road and Mystery Lane, and there's a location where we can put the flagpole where it will not block any view of the street sign. There's also a light that would shine directly on the flag to be commensurate with flag protocols here in the state and in the nation. So, it's something we'd like to do as a community. There's no cost to the town at all. We would get DigSafe to come out, make sure it was good and safe to dig. We will get a person that knows how to plant flags to help us get it, so it'll be safe, of course, for our community. And we also have a team already of steady volunteers to make sure flag protocols are taken care of in bad weather and so forth. I think that's it. It's just a simple thing. We'd like to gift it to the town and then put it on that triangle of property.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
We've done this before in some other areas, and this has been done at the discretion of the DPW superintendent because it's on-town property, so I'm assuming that's the way I'm going to draft my motion, is we will accept the donation, and you work with the town administrator and the DPW director to facilitate this, you know.
Do you have any comments?
I do. I have a couple of comments.
Okay.
So, one, yes, we would certainly recommend that this be installed under the direction of the DPW. We're fine with the installation being done by the private parties, but communicate with the DPW. Secondly, because we are all familiar with some of the SJC law regarding flags, only the town of Bourne, only flags permitted by the town of Bourne can be raised. No private flags.
Yep.
And thirdly, along the same lines and consistent with your gift with the peace poles, is that if there is a commemorative plaque installed as part of the project, we would like to be able to review that language in advance, or any images that are placed on that plaque, to make sure that we're not getting, running afoul of any private speak, private speech issues.
Right. Are you planning any kind of plaque or just putting the flagpole up?
It says a small commem-
You know, we haven't, but we'd be happy to communicate whatever we would do. It would be, of course, very simple and probably just relate back to the club and the origin, perhaps, of the flag. So, to be clear, can we put the club's burgie up or just the town? Okay, I just want to make sure I understand.
Yeah.
And not the state flag?
The flags can only be raised with the town's permission. So, the town, in certain instances, have raised other flags, but that is a formal process. So, daily or under normal circumstances, it is only the American flag.
Okay. So, any other flag, we ask permission, but likely the town flag is the next one that we would be able to use.
Well, the state flag has been raised for certain occasions. The town flag has been raised for certain occasions. Other countries' flags have been raised for certain occasions, but normal daily activity would only be the American flag.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying.
Sometimes, if I may.
Yes.
In some cases and some towns, they do also have a tribal nation flag that sits with the town. Those are allowed, and some towns do honor that.
Mm-hmm.
So, if we request permission, I don't want to dwell on this too much, but for the, like, the town flag, could we get, like, a one-time permission to fly it when it's comfortable, or should we call each time?
It would have to be case by case.
Okay. That's fine.
There are a lot of, there are a lot of rules if we stray from this about what-
I understand.
We have to be equal, give equal opportunity, and if we start allowing a lot of private and different flags, it could open up a can of worms.
I respect that.
Yeah.
So, I'll make a motion that we accept the donation of a flagpole, and we would also accept your donation to allow a private person to put it in at the direction of the Public Works Superintendent.
Second.
May I ask who to speak to at the DPW that would be most direct?
Matt Suwicky.
Okay.
Okay. So, I have a motion by Peter. Did you second it?
Yes.
Yes.
And Jean second.
Thanks.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none. Oh, we can just vote. It's awesome. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Abstentions? It's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for suggesting it and for beautifying this intersection that I go through all the time. It'll be lovely. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Okay. Next is the consent agenda. On item A, appointment of Thomas Colby, that should be Thomas Dolby with a D-O-L-B-Y, and we are just correcting that scribbler's error in our motion. So, appointment of Thomas Dolby as constable, term ending April 14, 2028. Authorize a performance bonus in the amount of $5,000 to the town administrator. Authorize and execute the conservation restriction for 541 County Road and Valley Bars Road. D, Bourne High School Girls Across Use Substation 4 Pecassett for a car wash on April 26, 2025, with a rain date of April 27. It's a renewal. And E, Kind Heart for Kids, use of Buzzards Bay Park and Grass area next to the National Marine Life Center for their annual Kind Hearts Festival on May 17, 2025, and a one-day entertainment license for a DJ. Rain date is May 18, 2025. This is also a renewal. Is there a motion on the consent as amended?
Still moved.
Motion by Anne Marie. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Jean. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Abstentions? It's unanimous. Great. Next item is licensing and events, licensing applications. Our first, oh, I have to read, I have to get my script out. Hold on one second.
Angie, I have them on paper. That's easier.
That would be easier because, okay. So, first one is the name of the applicant is Grazia's Pizza LLC, DBA Luzia's Pizza Napolitana.
Best pizza ever.
I'm excited.
So's the right plant palm sandwich.
I second that one. Introduction, under General Laws of Chapter 138 and 140, as the licensing authority, the Bourne Select Board has received an application from Grazia's Pizza LLC, DBA Luzia's Pizza Napolitana, located at 89 Main Street, Buzzards Bay, to consider the application for a new annual wine and malt on-premises license. I hereby open the public meeting for that application.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. Attorney Christopher Corain with the Law Firm of Dunin-
Wait. I haven't recognized you yet.
My apologies.
That's all right. As the first order of business, I am entering into the record of this hearing a copy of the legal notice provided by the town for this public hearing. As the second order of business, I am entering into the record of this hearing a copy of the application and supporting materials provided to the town of Bourne dated March 6, 2025. And having taken those actions, I will now open the floor to the applicant who may speak to the application.
Thank you again, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. Attorney Christopher Corain with the Law Firm of Dunin, Corain, and Mashpee, here representing Grazia's Woodfire Pizza. I just make one correction. It's an Inc., not an LLC.
Oh.
The application says Inc., just the public hearing notice. For some reason, it said LLC, but just a clerical clarification. And then I also have-
Well, make sure that's in the motion, then?
Yes.
Okay.
It could be in the motion. Because I said, the application says Inc.
Yeah. Okay.
Woodfire Pizza Inc. So, it's Grazia's Woodfire Pizza Inc. is the-
Grazia's Wood-
Wood-
Fired.
Pizza Inc.
Pizza Inc.
DBA. And again, the application has it.
Okay.
And then I also have the green cards. I don't know-
I'll take those. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So, with that, again, we're here. With me is Luzia. We're here to, it sounds like most of the board is familiar with Luzia, Parker Ray, seeking an annual beer and wine license for their location at 89 Main Street Buzzards Bay. The location itself has been open for about a year now, and they continually get questions for their customers, is their, you know, is their alcohol able to be served? So, they've certainly found that there's a demand and a need, you know, to get the liquor license. Luzia herself has owned Grazia's in Bourne for over 10 years, that hopefully the board is familiar with, has never had any issues or violations or had to come before this board for any issues with that restaurant. She also holds a current license in Falmouth and also held a license in Sandwich, all of which, no violations. So, again, when the board looks at these applications, they, you know, focus on two issues. One is need, and one is qualification. You know, again, you know, they're certainly in need, given the feedback from customers and given the fact that Luzia's held licenses in the town of Bourne and in other towns without issue. She is, you know, well-qualified, well-experienced in the service and handling of liquor. Both her and Ray are TIPS certified. I don't know if the board wants copies or not, but, you know, they are both certified. But again, well over 10 years of experience handling liquor without any violations, whether it's before the town of Bourne, town of Sandwich, or the town of Falmouth. You know, so I, you know, just got to keep it, you know, short in that sense. You know, again, need and qualifications, and, you know, again, they've gotten feedback about the need, and again, you know, given that Luzia's familiar with this town, works in this town, has operated a restaurant in this town that serves alcohol for the last 10 years without issue, so that would say that she's well-qualified to obtain the license.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board? Okay. Thank you. I'm now going to open the floor to public comment. Is there anyone here in the audience who would like to comment on this license? Okay. Are there any other questions from the board? Are we ready to? I'm going to do my deliberation statement here. At this point, the licensing authority will now deliberate on the application. I am not closing the public record at this time. That way, if the deliberations identify additional questions or information that we need from the applicant, we'll be able to receive those answers or information into the record for our deliberations. Are there any questions? I will just say that the prior occupants of that premises had operated for a while without the license, and then they did get the license, and I think it'll be an enhancement to the operation, which is a wonderful operation. We are so pleased to have it in our town, so.
So, we close the hearing before the motion, right?
Yes. I will, if we're all set, I will move to close, we need a motion to close the public hearing prior to the final dispositive vote.
Second.
So, a motion by Anne Marie, second by Belissa, to close the hearing. So, and we need a motion, which we should be correct, make sure we say-
Motion to approve the new-
Well, it's supposed to hear in first before we go on.
Oh, yeah, okay. All right. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Abstentions? It's unanimous. Okay.
So, motion to approve the new annual wine and malt common victueller license for Grazia's Wood Fired Pizza Inc., DBA Luzia's Pizza Napolitana, at 89 Main Street Buzzards Bay.
Second.
Did I say that right?
For the reason, well, for the reasons stated by the board and here and no further, authorize to direct this town staff and town council to prepare correspondence memorializing the same for transmission to the applicant and alcoholic beverages commissioned. Okay. It's all in that motion.
So.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Abstentions? It's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck. Good night.
Okay. So, the next item is a new annual wine and malt on-premise license for a new annual common victueller license and a new annual live entertainment license for 6A Brewing Company Inc., 119 Cranberry Highway in Bourne. Under General Laws, Chapter 138 and 140, as the licensing authority, the Bourne Select Board has received an application from 6A Brewing Company Inc., located at 119 Cranberry Highway, Bourne, to consider the application for a new annual malt, annual wine and malt on-premises, annual common victueller, and annual live entertainment license. I hereby open the public hearing for that application. As the first order of business, I am entering into the record of this hearing a copy of the legal notice provided by the town of Bourne for this public hearing. As the second order of business, I am entering into the record of this hearing a copy of the application and supporting materials provided to the town of Bourne dated March 21, 2025. Having taken those actions, I will now open the floor to the applicant who may speak, concerning the application. Welcome, please introduce yourself.
Good evening. My name is Ed Han. I'm an attorney. I represent 6A Brewing Company Inc. 6A Brewing operated a brew pub at this location for a number of years and was forced to close as a consequence of the COVID pandemic and is now back and would like to reestablish the operation. We started this process almost a year ago. It turned out not to be quite as simple as, you know, opening the doors again. We first were required to obtain a special permit and a site plan review through the town planning board, which we did and accomplished last November. We've now filed our application for a brew pub, common victors license and entertainment, as you reported, and we're here to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board?
I think, I mean, I remember the previous business there, so I, I mean, if it's the same business, it's pretty clear what they do. They had a great, great location there, and I enjoyed their food.
Yeah.
The pub had been very popular.
Very popular, yeah. Very popular, yeah.
The principal of the pub is my client, Linus Ravinskis. Mr. Ravinskis is a longtime resident of the Cape. He also operates a construction company, and is very active in the construction business on the Cape. He is a, as they say, a model citizen. There have never been any difficulties with the operation of the brew pub in the past, or otherwise. And I think he deserves your consideration and approval.
Yeah, it'd be nice to see a little activity over there again.
Thank you for coming, for coming forward and investing in our town. Reagan Jason, you know, being the neighbor next door, I'm sure appreciates it very much. It's probably good for security reasons by having an active business going that's thriving as opposed to having something, an empty lot going over there. So I thank you for taking the time to invest in our community and doing something with that property.
And we also did get a letter of support from Alice Thinkovich for-
Yeah.
For the, for this. Okay, so I'm going to open the floor to public comment. Is there anyone from the public that is here to comment on this license? So, at this point, the licensing authority will deliberate on the application. I'm not closing the public hearing at this time. That way, if the deliberation identifies any information that we need of the applicant, we'll be able to receive those answers or information into the record for our deliberations. Are there any questions or deliberations? Does anyone want to state their reason for approving the license?
I will. Motion to approve the new annual wine and malt-
Oh, we got a mo-, we're going to close-
Oh, close the hearing, yeah.
I'm going to close, but, you know, we, as a reestablishment of business that was clearly established, we support the license. Okay, yeah, that's good. So I would need a motion to close the hearing.
Ann Marie already made a motion, so I'll send it in.
Yes.
So Ann Marie, Peter, to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, abstentions? It's unanimous. Now we'll take the motion.
All right. Motion to approve the new annual wine and malt on premises license, a new annual common victular license, and a new annual live entertainment license for 6A Brewing Company Inc., located at 119 Cranberry Highway Bourne, for the reasons stated by the select board during this hearing, and further to authorize and direct town staff and town council to prepare correspondence memorializing the same for transmission to the applicant and to the alcoholic beverage control commission.
Woo!
Second.
Motion by Ann Marie, second by Peter. Excellent motion, by the way. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Abstentions? It's unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Come in for a sample.
Next is new online only class two dealer license for Anna Maria Aguila? Aguila?
Aguilo.
Aguilo. Aguilo, DBA Profile Auto Sales, 10 Fort Tap Road, Bourne. I took French, not Spanish, so.
Good evening. My name is Anna Maria Aguilo. I live on 10 Fort Stop, here in Bourne. And I'm trying to explore a new business online. I'm, I'm going to learn the business. I'm a business person. I'm holding a real estate broker license for 20 years, so I know how to follow the route on the license.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
I make a motion that we approve the online only class two dealers license for Anna Maria Aguilo, DBA Profile Auto Sales at 10 Fort Tap Road, with the condition of a two-car maximum steward in garage only, and no in-person slash customer visits to the property.
I'll second that.
Yeah. Okay, so we have a motion by Peter, second by Melissa. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Abstentions? It's unanimous. Thank you. Luck with your business!
Thank you so much. Have a good evening.
You're welcome.
Thank you, you too.
Okay. Now we're on consideration of events. A lot happening in Bourne here. First is renewal use of town roads for the National MS Society's Annual Bike MS Cape Cod Gateway on June 28 and 29, 2025.
Do we have to, are we going to prove them all up individually?
Yeah, they're all new.
Ones are new.
Why is this on a, it's unusual for renewal. Is there a change? Was there a change?
I always end up making the condition of the no parking.
This one always gets split out.
Okay. So it's no parking, so you have, so that's why, request for the no parking.
Yeah. I make a motion that we approve the National MS Society's use of town roads for the annual bike MS Cape Cod Gateway ride with the condition of no parking for the Taylor's Point Roads areas on June 20, 12 midnight, June 28, to 12 noon, June 29, 2025.
Second.
Motion by Peter, second by Jean. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Abstentions? It's unanimous. Two noon, use of Buzzards Bay Park for sunrise service organized by Wareham Area Clergy Association on April 20, 2025 with no rain date.
I think Mac's here for that.
Is there someone online that would like to speak, or? We can just-
Have to Mac?
Yeah.
Thank you for consideration, and it's a good possibility that we'll be able to do this each year in this location, unifying the churches of both Bourne and Wareham.
Any questions about the sunrise service? Okay, seeing none.
Motion, we approve the Wareham Area Clergy Association's use of Buzzards Bay Park for an Easter sunrise worship service.
Second.
Motion by Peter, second by Ann Marie. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Abstentions? It's unanimous. You are all set. Thank you. Next is new use of Buzzards Bay Park for a wellness event in 5K organized by the Bourne Board of Health on May 5, 2025. Rain date 5/24. Is that right? May 5? Isn't that our Monday? Something they're doing on a Monday?
May 10th.
It's May 10th.
Okay, I was going to say.
Sorry, yes, it's May 10th.
All right then. So, May 10th. I was going to say they're doing it on a Monday. That's, that's in my mind, because it's a town meeting, so.
Yeah.
I was like, okay. Would you like to speak? Is anyone there to speak for the event? Would you like to introduce yourself?
Yes. I'm Dr. Miguel Prito. I'm a regular physician and lifestyle medicine physician here in Bourne. My office in Trought Ridge, and I'm a member of the Board of Health. I repent trying to promote lifestyle changes in people that will decrease the need of needing exceedingly increasing amount of medications and medical interventions to keep you healthy. So the whole point is to try to get the knowledge out to the community that when you apply four lifestyle changes. One, do not isolate social integration. Two, having at least five servings of fruit and vegetables a day. Three, exercising 150 minutes a week. And four, not smoking. Just by doing those four things, the ladies would prolong their life expectancy 14 years. We guys get up to 10, and the risk for the measure goes down 54%. So these are very simple lifestyle choices that can be implemented, and we just want to get the voice out so people can apply them and benefit from them. We're not timing the 5K, so it'll be to each person to walk it or run it. And, and we're bringing, we're having stations to talk about these four different things. And I'm having people from the VNA, Cape Cod Healthcare VNA, the culinary students from Upper Tech, the nursing students from Upper Tech. I have another members of the Board of Health to talk about social integration and so on. So I'm hoping that the community will benefit, and I believe that, as you said, the health agent will be providing clothing where, like socks and so on, that is then that it would prevent rain to avoid tick bites. So I'm hoping this is successful.
Sounds great. Are there any questions from the board? Is there a motion?
Just a comment first.
Okay.
Usually when you hear about the Board of Health, you're thinking about regulatory things or complaints, you know, about a violation. Where this here with Dr. Prito being on the Board of Health and doing something to promote a healthier environment, it's great. It's great to see that the Board of Health is stepping, stepping outside their comfort zone to do this, and it's nice that they're giving back to the community as well. So thank you, Dr. Prito, for coming forward with this. Make a motion to the Bourne, approve the Bourne Board of Health's use of Buzzards Bay Park for their wellness event.
Second.
Motion by Peter, second by Jean. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Abstentions? It's unanimous. You're all set. Thank you very much.
It was May 10.
May 10, yes. You are approved for May 10, and rain date the 24th.
Yeah.
Next is new use of Buzzards Bay Park for a baby shower organized by Morgan Thatcher on June 21, 2025 with no rain date. Is Morgan is here?
Yes, she is.
I am here. Hi, Morgan Thatcher. I originally actually grew up in the Wareham area, but I now live in Brockton. But I love the canal. I love that area. I think it's so great and peaceful. So I would love to celebrate with my family there for, and I, my godfather got married there and different things. So I would love to celebrate in that area for our fourth child that we are welcoming into the world.
Oh, wow. That's great.
I make a motion to you for the use of Buzzards Bay Park for a baby shower organized by Morgan Thatcher on June 21, 2025 with no rain date.
Second.
Motion by Melissa, second by Peter. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Abstentions? It's unanimous. Thank you. Have a nice baby shower.
Good luck with the weather.
Good luck with the weather. Next is use of, five, use of Buzzards Bay Park for a field trip organized by Old Colony YMCA Summer Fun Club on August 5, 2025, with the rain date of August 14. Is there someone here from Old Colony YMCA? It's a pretty extensive event.
It is.
Yeah. Well, if they are going to bring in any campies or dogs, just, they got to be no stakes.
That's, that's, that's pretty clear. So they're looking for use of the Buzzards Bay Park for a field trip, and the rain date. So they're going to have, they're going to use a lot of the park. They're going to use the pavilion. They're going to use the splash pad. They're going to use the playground. They said use of existing trash perils and are already there. The group games, they're going to have games, kickball, soccer, touch football.
175 people.
I think it'll be, it'll be, definitely going to be a fun event, for sure.
Actually, I think it was more. There's 175, right?
175 people, yeah.
My question is how, you know, because it's a public, publicly owned, it's a public property. So how are you going to be able to say business being, you know, separated out? I just don't want to see, we have problems with total, with visitors that come in and don't realize what's going on and have any confusion on during the day of the event.
There's no exclusive use, so.
Yeah.
It's not an exclusive use of the park.
Right.
So they'll be-
It's the rest are going to take.
What?
Yeah. They're responsible, safety plan, all staff.
I thought it was me.
All children move about the park with chaperones, two or three chaperones with each group of children. Approximately 13 to 26 kids per group, two-site programs, not in a group to oversee. That's a lot of supervision.
There is a lot of supervision. They just have to understand that they're sharing a space, yeah.
And they're, they've, they signed a release, right? We're totally, they're totally responsible for the children, totally take all that responsibility. Okay.
For motion to approve Old Colony YMCA Summer Fun Club use of Buzzards Bay Park for a field trip on August 5, 2025 with a rain date of August 14, 2025, so have two conditions of town departments.
Yeah. Could, could we put in the motion, just non-exclusive use of Buzzards Bay Park?
Yes.
Just to be clear.
Page one.
Okay.
Second.
So, motion by Peter, second by Jean. Sounds like a fun day for the kids, anyway. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Abstentions? It's unanimous. See if they come back next year.
Yeah, well, I don't know.
Another one, new use of Buzzard, Sagamore Beach for wedding ceremony organized by Isabella Ellis on June 21, 2025. Isabella, I see you there. You may speak. Can you unmute yourself?
Yes, ma'am. Good, good evening. My name's Isabella. I'm currently serving active duty Air Force. My husband and I, we already got married in the deserts of New Mexico, but we didn't ever get a chance to do our big family ceremony. And it's a very common thing for couples in the military to have a very small private affair, and then later on have the big family ceremony. And once I PCSed here, and I saw, I got my orders to Cape Cod, I got the idea, well, Cape Cod is known for its beaches, and I love the beaches here, and the scenery is beautiful, especially with the flowers blooming and all the hydrangeas. And I thought, what, what better place to do the big family gig than Cape Cod? So I was hoping to have my family ceremony on Sagamore Beach.
Okay, June 21. This is non-exclusive use of the beach. It's non-exclusive. I mean, there's going to be other people on the beach. We can't really guarantee, like, exactly where you want to be or whatever, but you're, you know.
People are, people are cognizant, and they'll, they'll be, most people will be respectful.
Yeah.
It seems to work out. We have a lot of weddings on that beach, so. It seems to work out well.
Yeah.
Understood. I am, I'm going to be doing it later on in the day, like, at 4:00. So I don't think it'll be too crazy, hopefully.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, thank you for your service.
Yes.
You're welcome.
And, I mean, the same with the parking at Clark Field. I mean, a lot of people do park, but that's, you know, that can be a crowded parking lot depending on the weather, so. But I think it'll be great.
In fact, we just did the ramp down there, didn't we? It's at the end of Sagamore Road, so that, so it'll be a safer access onto the beach now, the new, the recent weather that's going on over there right now.
It's not done yet, is it?
Everything's done except for the line painting.
Oh.
But it'll be, it's supposed to be done by then.
Yeah.
That's good, that they gave us that little extension on the piping pullovers.
Motion to approve Isabella Ellis's use of Sagamore Beach for wedding ceremony on June 21, 2025.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Peter, second by Jean. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Abstentions? It's unanimous. Okay. You're all set.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Have a lovely day.
Yeah.
You too.
Okay. Next is review of draft voter handbook. We're going to do this totally in order. Review and vote budget adjustments for the proposed FY '26 operating budget. It's in your packet on- It's in your packet on.
Sixty-seven.
Page sixty-seven. Yes, it is.
So the, the budget adjustments that we need you to vote tonight are the salary changes based on the four unions that closed last week. So after your vote of last week to accept those MOAs, we have made all of those adjustments. So there's various general fund departments that are impacted. And then the, then the ISWAM group is also impacted. So we have made all of those adjustments based on the FY26 numbers for those MOAs.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Seeing none. Is there a motion to approve the budget adjustments on?
The proposed fiscal year 26.
Just on the proposed budgets on page sixty-seven as presented.
In sixty, yeah, sixty-seven.
Yeah, cuz I think they're like a different pages.
Yeah.
Sixty-seven is the operating.
For the proposed fiscal year 26.
Was that a motion by Melissa and a second by Anne Marie?
Sounds perfect.
Motion by Melissa, second by Anne Marie. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? It's unanimous. Okay. Next is, I think, is the sewer, the sewer department, next on page sixty-eight.
Yeah.
Yep.
No, ISWAM?
No, ISWAM?
No, we didn't.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So sewer was incorporated in.
Into DPW.
DPW.
Yes.
Is that a new motion, though?
No, it's all one.
Okay, so.
It's all part of the operating budget, right?
Right, but we didn't vote these to vote to recommend. So, so we should vote.
Article two.
Recommend approval of the motion on article two.
Isn't that what we're doing next?
That's 10B.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So review and vote recommendations. All right. A two, FY26 operating budget, article two. Okay.
Motion that we move approval of article two of the annual town meeting for the FY26 operating budget.
Second.
Motion by Peter, second by Anne Marie. Is there any discussion? What this is like? So look at the motion. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? It's unanimous. Okay. So now the sewer budget.
Move approval, recommend approval of article three of the annual town meeting.
Second.
Motion by Peter, second by Melissa. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions?
And the move recommend approval of article four of the annual town meeting.
Second.
Which is the FY26 ISWAM budget.
Motion by Peter, second by Anne Marie. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Is there, there's, is there a motion on article four yet?
Yes.
Yep, it's in your packet on page.
Seventy.
We moved the sum of fourteen million eight hundred eighty-six thousand five hundred seventy dollars to be authorized to be expended for the operation of the, of the integrated solid waste management department for the fiscal year start in July 1, 2025.
It's in the wrong place.
To include, including June 30, 2026 adds follow-up. Solid waste is two million four hundred seventy-one thousand seven hundred ninety-seven dollars. Expenses, ten million seven hundred eighty-four dollars and seven hundred seventy-three dollars. Reserve fund, six hundred thousand. And a host community fee of one million thirty thousand. And we further moved at the sum of two million five hundred eighty-one thousand eight hundred twenty-five dollars to be transferred to the general fund to offset the ISWAM enterprise indirect expenses in order to meet disappropriation. We moved at the sum of seventeen million four hundred sixty-eight thousand three hundred ninety-five be raised from ISWAM enterprise receipts.
I was looking in the handbook and it's not in the handbook yet. It's in a sep, it's in separate pages in the packet. That's why I was confused cuz it wasn't a motion in the handbook. Okay. Motion by, was, was that?
Peter.
Motion by Peter and the second by?
Anne Marie.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? It's unanimous. Okay. It was reviewing the draft voter handbook is item 10. And I just wanna make a comment on the handbook article thirty-two, I think, is the nitrogen article. And when we did our motion last week, we voted three, two in favor, three opposed on the recommendation. But then we had another vote for the purpose of the handbook to say the recommendation, the select board voted three in favor, two opposed to recommend defeat of the article. And I don't think that's what it was.
You wanted to read defeat, not not recommend.
Yeah, so, so, so we wanna say the recommendation of select board, the select board voted three in favor and two opposed to recommend defeat of the article. Rather than say not recommend, the other way, not recommend. It's two, that's what, we had that separate vote to have it be more clear, I think.
Yes, fine.
The rest, I didn't see anything else really out of the handbook. I just wanted to mention that. Assigned articles to select board members. So I sent out a list. Is everybody okay with the articles that they have?
I thought they were fine.
Oh, good.
Okay. Saw my math, six, seven, three. Move this one here, that one there. We're all good. Okay. So you're all assigned. Discussion and possible vote regarding SciTech draft letter to MBI, RE expectations for gap or bead funded improvements. We had a draft letter from SciTech. We had a lot of draft letter from SciTech. I, I'm interested in comments from the board. I, I crossed out a bunch of stuff in this letter to try to simplify it. So I'm happy to hear what you have to say, but I think that we need to discuss the draft, too. So I'll give you the floor.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Good evening, once again, to several of you. Third meeting of the day, I think, with you. Again, I'm Bob Dwyer. I'm chairman of your Cable Internet and Telecom Advisory Committee. And joining me tonight is Wendy Howland, who's our clerk. She's, she's on Zoom tonight. Again, we've had a lot of problem trying to communicate with Comcast regarding exactly what they are planning, what they are doing, how they are complying with the original letter of support that you sent in December, December 5, 2023. And we really haven't gotten much back. So this letter is an effort to send to Mr. Baldino, the director of the Mass Broadband Institute, along with his staff, to see if he can facilitate some communication with Comcast to find out what they're doing, how they intend to comply with the specifics. And I won't go into all the geekiness of the, the technical parts of that in the, in the original notice, our letter of support that got them an original grant for $24,000 under the gap two grant round funding. What's at issue is that coming up, there is an additional, our estimate is about $3 million plus or minus of additional funding for un and underserved properties that, that we identified, that MBI may add to Comcast's original $24,000 grant. And we wanna know exactly how they're going to do that. It'll be under the original letter of support. So again, the, the whole emphasis on the letter is to identify exactly how they're going to comply with the specifications that you put in your original letter of support. And simplification is wonderful. This was written by a committee, as you can tell.
And, and I think it's a great idea. I mean, I did have conversations with Mr. Baldini and, you know, and I do think that a, a meeting might be helpful because there's questions and then we can get everything out on the table. I think the board does have to discuss who they want to have meet with Comcast or they wanna have Comcast come in and have this discussion with the full board or they want representation and then to kind of come to a resolution for the board. Or, and I'm open to any way of doing it. But I would say, I looked at the letter and I understand you, you all are very passionate and very detailed and very, you know, you've been working on this very thoroughly. I am a little bit concerned about stating anything in this letter other than the fact of the reason that we wanna have a meeting and why we wanna have a meeting. And knock away into, well, this, if you don't do this. I don't, I don't wanna, I wanna have the meeting talk about what we want. I don't wanna have the letter, really. So in the letter that they sent, the beginning part of the letter is fine. There is a paragraph at the bottom of the first page, and this is on page 141 of your packet.
Yeah.
We have been unable to receive this confirmation from Comcast. Accordingly, we request MBI to facilitate, facilitate a meeting with Comcast and the town representatives, too. One, A, I agree with this, obtain an explanation of why their gap plans do not fully specify the townwide upgrades that are conditions of our support. Two, I would just use the first sentence. Clarify ineligible determinations by asking Comcast to explain why 12 of the 16 initial locations were declared ineligible in their gap networks to grant application. And I think I would, the rest of that bullet, I would just, I would just take out.
I've got my red pen here.
Yeah. This is just, and then in the third bullet, I would say, provide clarification to the town about the addition of the expanded list of 1,700 locations, including bead challenge areas to gap funding and what level of service these additional locations will receive. That's really what we.
That's the meat, that's the meat of the.
That's what we want, that's what we want. And, and it's, the explanation is not just for Comcast to just, to say why they did this. It's also for MBI to explain why, why they did that. The last two paragraphs I would take out. I think they're explanatory of where you came from and why you wrote the letter. But I, I would not put those in the letter. And then I would say, thank you for your consideration. We look forward to hearing from you. And so we wanna have a meeting. These are reasons we wanna have a meeting. Please set up the meeting. And, and that's kind of what I would do for this, for this letter.
Madam Chairman, can you give the changes to Anne Marie? And we'll, we'll polish this up on Thursday morning and to facilitate this could.
I mean, I, I think, I believe you sent us a Word document. I think the Word document, if those changes are fine with the select board, I can make the changes to the Word document and it's good to go. You, you guys don't need to approve it if the select board does.
If I needed rewording, we volunteer, but it doesn't.
Yeah.
You can take care of that.
So I don't know how people feel about my changes. They're okay with them.
I think it sounds good.
Yeah.
Yeah. To the point.
Yeah, I think it's important to get the two, MBI and Comcast in the same, same room.
Yes.
Does the town ministry have any?
Cuz it has a huge impact, the way they made adjustments with the gap, sorry, with the gap round two. And then that little turnaround, 180 with bead and pulling, you know, extending monies and grabbing monies and shifting monies. And now we're at a point where, well, what are you, what are you doing in our town? And how is it gonna benefit? Because, you know.
And I think the part, the, the part that I gleaned in my, you know, communications with SciTech is that the 1,700 locations that are the bead challenge locations.
We can't lose those.
We, and, and we wanna make sure that they're gonna come to the same standard that we were supposed to get in the first part.
Right.
So I think that's a really important conversation to have with, with Comcast. And so.
Madam Chair, one quick point is if Comcast needs to do any adjustments to the budget that they're giving to MBI right now and considering it, this is the time for them to do it. Oh, we didn't have to do that. We need more money.
Yeah.
We need to get the claim in because they're gonna peg this money down and very soon, MBI is gonna release bead round two solicitations.
Right. So if, if everyone's okay, if we can have like a motion to have the author as the chair to sign the letter as amended, then we can move forward with that. And then I would like to have just a brief conversation about who would be, who we should have, how we wanna structure the meeting. Okay.
Second.
Is there any further discussion on the letter? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, abstentions? It's unanimous. Okay.
On behalf of the committee, thank you very much.
On behalf of the board, thank you very much for giving us a draft. It's wonderful to have a draft that you can like edit. So I don't know how the board feels about this. And I don't know how Marlene, I don't know if you're interested in attending this meeting, if we wanna have a couple SciTech members, a couple.
Yeah.
A couple board members.
I think a smaller group as opposed to a large group is, is probably more effective with conversation.
Right. Just to have sit down and have.
Yes, yeah.
I'm willing for attending to sit back and listen.
I think.
Well, so the pro, the thing is.
That's the problem.
It becomes a posted, it becomes a posted meeting. So I think.
Just report back to the board. I don't need to.
Yeah, so if, if, if Anne Marie and I and maybe two members of SciTech, are you interested in participating?
Mm-hmm.
Marlene, so two members of the board, two members of SciTech, Marlene, and then Comcast and MBI, whoever they wanna have come, that we would.
If they agree to it, it'd be nice. I hope they agree.
Well, if they don't agree, that's another conversation.
Right, I know.
I failed up Comcast. I mean, MBI is, they're willing to have, help facilitate this meeting.
Yeah, there's plenty of representation regionally that we, we should be able to have someone come.
Yeah. From, from SciTech's point of view, we need, in addition to me doing the front work for them, we need at least one of our three technical people to come. People who understand all the nuts and bolts.
Right. Yeah, Brian Jeter.
We'll do a recommendation. We'll discuss this on Thursday morning at our meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So can, can we have a motion to have like two members of the board, two members of SciTech and Marlene be participating in the meeting?
So move.
Second.
Motion by Peter, second by Jean. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
On the board, I'm willing to go, Marlene, I mean, and Anne Marie.
Yeah, that's fine. Just report back to us.
Okay. All right, then. Progress. And I will note that Marlene had reached out to Comcast about our stuff last week and they have reached out to Jen McGrail, so.
Like, Michael Gallagher did?
Yeah.
So they're finally, they may be getting their new equipment. So they're finally, they may be getting their new equipment finally or always?
Well, well, just, it's, there's, there's movement. So next is discuss request from, uh, Falmouth Water Advisory Committee regarding septic tax credit program. So there was, um, in our packet, there was an interesting PowerPoint. And, uh, it's actually interesting that Greg Berman brought up this septic tax program. I also forwarded separately the, um, the letters that Falmouth had kind of set, um, that, the issue being to try to get state legislation that would expand this program. And, um, I, I think, especially if we're going to continue to use IA systems as a major part of our CWMP, that we should sort of help support Falmouth's efforts to get this, um, done. I don't know how other people on the board feel.
I haven't had enough time to look at it, I mean, it just got sent, so I need to like review it, look at it before I'm going to make any decisions on it.
Well, so here's my suggestion. If, if we're interested in doing it, then we can, you know, we can take, take their letters and draft the letters and have it as an, uh, an agenda item for another meeting that's like letters that are, um, the concept was in the packet in terms of like what the program is. And that issue being like what he, what, um, Greg Berman said in public comment is that if you, if, if it's an eighteen thousand dollar tax credit, right, and you only pay two thousand dollars in taxes in Massachusetts, you're only going to get that tax credit.
Right.
That first year, it's going to take you, you're not even going to, I think it takes, I think the way it's written, you only have five years that you can get the credits. So you're only going to get ten thousand.
It's amortized over five, I believe.
Yeah, so, so the problem being that it's kind of limited by the amount that you pay in mass state taxes. And, you know, if someone pays a lot, it sounds like a lot.
And that's the biggest change, regardless of how much you owe.
That's really what they're trying to get.
That's what they're trying to get at. Regardless of what you owe, you can get the maximum amount of credit.
The eighteen thousand and maybe, you know, up to four thousand dollars a ye- you know, up to four thousand dollars a year. So if people are interested in doing this, I'm willing to sort of take the draft letters that we got and, and, or we can just put it on for another agenda if you want to look at the draft letters that they sent and then come back with edits, what do you want to do?
Can I make, can I make a comment?
Yes, please.
So one of the, one of, one of the issues that is giving me pause is that the legislation isn't drafted yet. So I do think it is important for you to know what the legislation actually says. You have your legis- you have your delegation night coming up where you can talk with Dave.
It's on my list of questions.
I think you might be able to have, I think you might be able to make this decision al-, I think you might be able to make this decision after you talk to Dave and, and the delegation.
Yeah.
I would be careful not to kind of commit to sending a letter or, or even drafting a letter if, without, you know, without having more background on the legislation itself.
And, and I, I, um, I understand what, I understand what you're saying and I think it's a good point. I think notifying our legislators that we are interested in having some work done on the legislation is, you know, maybe that's the appropriate time to do it and I'm fine with that. So, because we don't have that many meetings before, before then anyway, so.
Yes.
Well, well, just, I think that's a kind of a good approach that we, um, make a point at that legislative update about talking to them about the septic loan program and the, and support of the, the other thing that isn't on the agenda, but we, um, need to talk about also is the changes in the SRF. Because the SRF has changed to make limits on how you get the money and whether it's.
And no rollover and living on.
And that's a big topic that, that we can add to our legislative update. So I think that's fine.
What's the date, what's our date for that again?
June third. June third was when we could get the most people to come.
And that's our regular business meeting too, so it's, that's to be a long agenda that night. Well, time constraint, because usually legislative delegating takes an hour.
Yeah, it ta- it takes, yeah. There's no, I mean, but that's kind of a.
We can keep.
We'll keep other things.
We can keep other things off, we can hold other things in abeyance.
Yeah. So we'll have the meeting on the tenth then.
Yeah, well, I mean, if, if stuff can be held over to the tenth.
Yeah, well, well, oh, watch that, so. Okay, that's fine, so we'll just put that, um, so, um, I, I encourage you all to like sort of, um, take some time to read some of those letters just to understand some of the issues. We're all set with that, town administrator's report.
I have received a phone call from Mass Housing regarding a newly filed forty B in town called Deer Path Village. I have late this afternoon received a copy of the plans electronically. However, I have not had a chance to look at those or distribute them yet, but I will do so by the end of the week. Mass Housing has emailed the notice letter to the town, which I forwarded to the board earlier this afternoon. The select board has thirty days to submit comments on the proposed forty B with a deadline of May fifteenth. The library feasibility study committee will be having a public meeting this Thursday, April seventeenth at five thirty PM at the library. The agenda and Zoom information are available on the town calendar. The Southside Fire Station Building Committee will be holding a public meeting about the proposed new station on May first at seven PM at the middle school library. I have not yet received the requested schedule update from Apex regarding the delivery of the draft comments from the MEPA certificate issued for the CWMP. I will forward the information to the select board as soon as I receive it. I do want to let the board know that Comcast has reached out to me earlier this week regarding the equipment that they owe the town. We have put them in touch with Warrant TV to coordinate access. As soon as the violation notice is finalized, I will provide the board a copy and I will also provide updates as the equipment upgrades are scheduled. We are on track to finalize the voter handbook and send that to the printers on Friday. We did see a statement issued today by the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. And this is something that we may have to discuss, it could have some impact. However, the public statement that was released reads, "Due to the federal hiring freeze, the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers New England District Recreation Areas across New England will experience reduced hours, limited access to facilities, and significantly reduced services this summer. We appreciate your understanding as we work to serve you with limited staff."
What they do, at least around the canal, is a lot of it is volunteers, you know, they go up and down in the, the little mini vehicles and they clean out the, uh, the bathrooms and stuff. But, you know, maybe, maybe we just have to source a little more volunteer help just while these budget constraints are going on, you know. It is part of our community and it may fall on us, but we're pretty resourceful about asking for help out there, so we'll see what we can come up with. We have a great recycling committee.
And so we haven't heard yet for, from Helen on the dates. I know she said that, that she wasn't sure when she was going to have the document, but she hasn't even got dates yet.
Yeah.
Okay.
Most of the minutes are three eighteen twenty-five.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, abstentions, it's unanimous. Committee reports.
Southside Fire Station, as, um, Marlene, I think, just said, the, um, meeting, we decided that there was going to be a public, um, meeting, uh, at Bourne Middle School Library on May first at seven o'clock. And there's also going to be a, um, a TV recording that's going to be on the seventeenth this week with, um, Wayne, the chief, and Mark, I don't know how to pronounce his last name, of the project.
S.
With an Mark S.
Secocchio.
Secocchio, oh, he's the, the engineer, I believe, in the project, so. So that'll go up and, um, but letting as many people as we know was the goal about the upcoming meetings and events, so we can get all the questions out on May first.
That's good.
We had IceWAM building committee feasibility and I think from going through this process so far, it, it's definitely show why we pulled the article. We got a long way to go. I mean, a lot of what is being proposed is conceptual, but as we're going through the process of looking at it, it's way outside the scope of what we need, so we've more or less had to go back to the drawing board and see if they can, you know, condense it, you know, because, you know, twenty-five million for a building, forget it. Even if IceWAM's paying for it, it's still in, and we got to be stewards of the town's money, you know, taxpayers' money. Um, and I know it's going through revenues, you know, you know, from IceWAM, but still. And so we've, you know, we have to look at scheduling and see what's realistic for proposed scheduling and debt service and everything else. I mean, we just got to slow down and make sure that what we're, what, what we're presenting to the voters is the right project. So we'll be slowing down and asking those pointed questions. We're not going to get pushed by consultants telling us what they think, no, they know better than us versus our town.
Anybody else? Okay, uh, correspondence?
Correspondence, April fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five. A, D.
Two hundred and seventy-five pages of correspondence.
I fell asleep reading it, sorry. I just not, could not keep my eyes open any longer.
Could not wrap, yeah, I tried. DEP letter, final record of decision, Old Grenade Courts. B, Bridge Relocation Project, Abolpin Gas, Notice of Scoping Period. C, Joint Base Cape Cod, JBCC, April two thousand twenty-five, public meeting calendar. D, Attorney Letter Regarding Bayview Campground Response to Notice of Violation. E, Camp Edwards State of the Reservation Report, two thousand twenty-four. F, Steve Mealy Email and Comments Regarding CWMP. And G, Email from G. Berman Regarding NOI for Watershed Permit. That's it.
Future agenda items related to correspondence?
It's a brand new, it's called the Barbie Town.
I think that, uh, Mr. Berman's request is something we should look through. It's part of the big picture, the CWMP, so hopefully we'll have some discussion about that before the end of the fiscal year.
Well, we need, I think we need to.
Yeah.
I mean, I think we need to, I mean, and, um, I, um, I, uh, ev-.
We haven't heard back from Helen, so we don't.
We haven't heard back from Helen. I think we may have to have a extra meeting in May, but if not, I'll just put it on the meeting on the thirteenth. You know, I don't, I think we need to, even if we have a half hour discussion, even if we say.
Even if that's the only thing on the agenda.
What day is this?
May thirteen, well, that would be our regular meeting, so.
I think we should just get through the elections and get, I mean, May thirteenth for what?
It's after town meeting, that's after town meeting.
It's our select board meeting.
Yes, our regular select board meeting.
I know, I think we should get reorganized and deal with it. And that's if I'm even, you know, we don't know what the election's going to hold still either, so.
Okay, um, all right, uh, motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
I'm going to give that to Jean.
Oh, Jean.
Got it.
Jean, Jean, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, abstentions, it's unanimous. Yeah, not bad.